Welcome, everybody. Okay, welcome everyone. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
Wherever He has been. I will be thy name. The kingdom come, and will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Okay, so our next public workshop will be held here Tuesday, August 26th at 10:30 a.m. And our next regular meeting will be held here on Wednesday, August 27th at 10:30 a.m. There will be no workshop or regular meeting the week of September 1st, which is Labor Day, due to scheduling conflicts, and then we'll pick back up the following week. Madam Clerk, start the agenda.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated August 12th, 2025, and the regular meeting dated August 13th, 2025, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for the calendar year 2026. The completed prescribed form was submitted as approved by the Trumbull County Budget Commission on August 4th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to adopt a resolution approving the submitted list labeled as ORC 5705.41D, June 2025, of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with ORC.
Make a motion we approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested on the liquor permit application, and this is a transfer C1 and 2 from Max Convenience Store LLC in Brookfield Township to Adam A. Inc., doing business to Circle K in Brookfield Township.
Make a motion we approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nine is to approve the only bid submitted by U.S. Bridge Division of the Ohio Bridge Corporation for the purchase of the Newton Number 15 Selkirk Bush Road and Green Number 14 Wakefield Creek Road bridge kits, and to enter into a contract with U.S. Bridge Division of the Ohio Bridge Corporation in the amount of $260,020.
Mr. Chairman, I... Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway, Phalanx Mills, Herner Road, County Highway 127 in Southington Township, between State Route 534 and Herner County Line Road for a culvert replacement. Closing dates Monday, August 18th, 2025, through Friday, September 12th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies and resident as listed, Natural Areas Land Conservancy, Omni Fiber LLC, Cody Saicon, and Miller Yount Paving.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the companies listed, P.I.N.I. Motor Express, and Giro Transportation Services, Inc.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to approve the membership adjustment to designate Ms. Jen Matlack, current Housing Divisional Director at Access Family Services through Family and Community Services, Inc. as a member on the County Family Services Planning Committee. Ms. Matlack will replace Ms. Ann Face, former Director of Domestic Violence and Visitation Services at Someplace Safe, as she is no longer in that role.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 14 is to authorize the Commissioner's Clerk to advertise for competitive sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment necessary for and incidental to the construction for Trumbull County Stone Building renovations, roof HVAC system and alternates, on Monday, August 25th, 2025, on the Commissioner's website, Commissioner's Bolton Board, and On Demand Star.
Mr. Chairman, I move to make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 15 is to approve the renewal of the service agreement with Johnson Controls Fire Protection for the term of August 1st, 2025, through July 31st, 2026, for the buildings listed in the amount of $11,986.62, and those buildings are Administration Building, Trumbull County Jail, Trumbull County Courthouse, and Stone Building.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 16 is to appoint Ms. Tracy Little, Trumbull County Children's Services, to serve as a county representative on the Ohio Children's Trust Fund Northeast Regional Prevention Council. Ms. Little will serve a two-year term beginning August 20th, 2025, and ending August 20th, 2027. Ms. Little will be replacing Ms. Tracy Seymour Evans, who will be transitioning into the chair role in September, and who was appointed as a county prevention specialist by the Board of Commissioners to serve her first term on November 20th, or on November 2nd, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 17 is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Ms. Elizabeth Zagorsky from her position of Utility Clerk 2, pay range 4, $1692 per hour, to the position of Utility Account Clerk 2, pay range 5, $1787 per hour, with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective Thursday, August 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 18 is to approve or deny construction of County Project Number 1-W-19A, the Anderson Morris Road Water Improvements Project located in Weathersfield Township. The public hearing for this project was held on July 30th, 2025. Results of the public hearing and public comment period indicate 32.55% of the property owners are opposed to said project, and 67.45% are in support based on benefited front footage.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion to approve the motion. Approve the agenda item.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 19 is to authorize Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to Z-Tech Builders and Excavators, Inc. for the State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, known as County Project Number 1-S-19 in Brookfield Township within the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Subdistrict.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 20 is to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to send notification letters to all of Trumbull County's currently registered and licensed home sewage treatment system installers, announcing that requests for price proposal packets are now available for pickup at the Trumbull County Planning Commission, 185 East Market Street, Warren. A fee of $10 is being charged for the price proposal packet, and this includes technical specifications for five owner-occupied households identified and qualified to receive assistance through the Project Year 2024 and Project Year 2025 OEP-A Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, Principal Forgiveness Program, HSTS Reserve Program.
Make a motion we approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go to discussion now before we go into executive session. That way, the people don't have to wait for us. If there's any discussion from the public, we can handle that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So at this time, prior to our executive session, we will move to public discussion. If you please come and give your name and reason for discussion. Ms. Green.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. I wanted to announce that we are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Howland Scope Center Improvement Project tomorrow, not today. Tomorrow, August 21st, at 1:00 p.m., and that is at 8273 High Street. And that is for one of the projects that were completed through the CDBG allocation program. There was close to $250,000 invested into that facility benefiting our seniors. So it is tomorrow, and I also want to thank Gary Newbrow for lending us his ribbon-cutting kit. So hope to see everybody there.
Is it the big scissors?
Well.
No.
They're kind of big.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, we're still in public discussion? Public discussion? No? Okay. Commissioner?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter an executive session pursuant to ORC 12122-G1 to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public official, official licensee, or regulated individual unless public employee. Official licensee, regulated individual requests a public hearing.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. You're welcome to stay. Hopefully, we're not going to be that long.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reconvene from executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public official, official licensee, or regulated individual unless the public employee, official licensee, or regular individual requests a public hearing.
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, so that concludes our meeting. We've already went into the public discussion. Commissioners, Dave, Mr. Nestic? Okay, we'll need a motion to adjourn and then I don't think we're going to have a meeting in public for this, drones, do you? I don't know, would that be uncharacteristic?
Are you going to ask us for any, is this educational or are you going to ask us for assistance in any way?
Information.
Okay, then I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.